Okay.
Thanks. Curriculum, innovation, and strategic partnership work session. So as always, we start with a call to order. The beginning and our first 10.9 public comment. Have you had any sign up?
No, I am.
The floor is yours.
Okay. Thanks for the floor. Happy New Year, everybody. For those of you who just know me, I just met a couple. And I yet met, I'm Diana Cole. I'm a marriage and family therapist for a long time. And I have been promoting a healthy relationships skills course to be offered here in order to prevent a lot of depression and anxiety against suicide rate, which you know is going up with you. And so I'm here again. How many, if any of you know Kelly Purcell? Nobody knows Kelly, okay? She was a teacher here a few years ago. She was gonna be here today to also support this school. She will be here in February. So in the meantime, I want to tell you a short story about one of my clients. And why I'm so passionate about having this population kids. I have a recent client and name is another name, she's thirty six years old. And has been in a twenty year abusive relationship. At fifteen sixteen. Did not know obviously how to navigate this relationship. Eventually, and it just happened the last year, he kidnapped her and put a gun to her head. And it was probably traumatic. And I've been seeing her for probably six months now. And we went to court last week and she read an impact statement about how it affected her. And she obviously had a say so about the sentencing. And obviously I was there to support her, but I was amazed by the reaction of this man, her ex-partner, who said he was very remorseful. She didn't deserve any of that treatment. And the thing that stood out to me was that he said, I didn't, no one taught me how to love. No one taught me. That's why I'm here. I want to be able to give students that possibility of doing that for their children. Because nobody teaches parenting skills. So I'm here again to advocate to push us forward in that.
Question. Um. Having just met you and chatted with you, I'm curious since you come to this together committee on multiple occasions. What is the reluctance to engage in this type of a program within the school district or barriers or you know, other things? I'm just curious. I think it's a phenomenal concept and definitely much needed first. So just wondering what past discussion go there?
Well, thanks. Typically after public comment, we ask board members to reflect back. And hopefully you'll hear an answer to something you just asked in one of those reflection.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Yes, we have Karina Locken.
Oh, I actually forgetting there are people here in the virtual world.
Hey, can you hear me now?
Yes, hello, I'm sorry.
Hey, good to see you all. Happy New Year. I just wanted to respond to last year's update on the heterogenous math curriculum. I'm really grateful to the teachers and the district's commitment to equitable math education. But the outcomes that you described in the meeting are not consistent with my experience as a parent. My seventh grader tells me at least once a week that she hates math. And when I ask her why, she tells me because she's bored. She tells me that one week there's new material, but then she feels there's two more weeks of repetition, even though she's got it in the first week. And as a result, she zones out and then I can see that she makes stupid mistakes because she's not paying attention. I hear similar things from other parents. And I also know from some parents whose kids, as a result, didn't get the grades in seventh grade to get immediately into algebra. And then it's up to the parents to push for taking a test to get into algebra. It's also then up to the parents to provide tutoring. Either the parents themselves or paid tutors to catch up enough to test into algebra. I'm seeing so many queries for math tutors and parent forums, both for the transition into algebra and also then when kids kind of get hit by the change in pace as they're trying to adjust from seventh grade maths to algebra. I also see a lack of understanding, especially among international parents, how important it is to take algebra in eighth in order to make it into calculus in high school. And calculus in high school matters because it's a prerequisite for most engineering and computer science curriculum. With the new universal lunch, high school schedules have become much less flexible. So it's even more difficult to catch up on math. And at the same time, colleges are now making SATs optional, so the high school transcript counts even more. So it's really important for children, if they want to succeed at the college level, to get an early start in this advanced math. I see massive parental privilege in terms of who is taking this advanced pathway. And I think this influence is stronger than I saw it before. So parental privilege in terms of education, knowing what matters for college and also being able to tutor one's own children in this advanced math. Also parental privilege in terms of finances, being able to pay for tutors if you yourself can tutor your children. And I really strongly feel that if we want to address disparities, it's not enough to hide them in school by artificially slowing down the curriculum during certain grades. But we really need to do both address it at the elementary school level where you can see these disparities. Especially they're stratified according to socioeconomic status. And then throughout the school, because it's not enough again to hide inequality. But what we have to do is to make sure that we address inequality at the top level and make sure that everybody has an equal chance to make it into advanced math and make it into college eventually. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other?
That's it.
Public comment? All right, my colleague Pat, any response?
So I'll respond first to Karina. This the math curriculum. Eldred and I, as we reported last month, sat in on a variety of classes and saw a variety of strategies for student engagement at the middle school level. And in asking about paths to calculus and how that is going at the middle and high school level, I think it was Mary who one, either Mary or Lily talked about the additional enrichment and support options there are, the different times that you can take classes to catch up that are not for the privilege. It's summertime, zero period, lunch or after school. Opposite study halls or physical education. Okay, so there are, there are there are periods for enrichment being put into the curriculum and also massive new resources for helping students with math. Ithaca High School students tutoring, being paid to tutor students for math. A Cornell math organization has been contracted for. So we're not just working with children of the privilege or children with privilege. We're working to put, I would say, more resources for more students to succeed in math than I have seen in my lifetime in this district. Why, when I was the parent of a high schooler who first guided her AP courses, the guidance office had a meeting for all the parents at night and they said there are no support for AP, your kids are on their own sink or swim. So I think we've come a long way. We obviously have a long way to go. The last three years have been horrific on math instruction. And many kinds of instruction and lots of kids have making up to do. That's national and for what I'm seeing, it's global. So we continue to move this along. As far as why this particular one course that one person was advocating for in the high school. It started out as a request that it be a mandatory school for every student in the high school. Years ago, years ago. And then it morphed into here's a, here's an elective that I would be happy to teach. We don't hire people to teach things because they want to teach them. And frankly, the problem that you're talking about is so much bigger than an elective course at the high school. The district has been working for years to implement the ruler curriculum, which works on emotional strength and resilience and relationships and respect and all the things for every student in every curriculum throughout the twelve years. And we think that's a much better approach and a more, a much better use of public funds.
Right. Can you, Pat?
Can I respond to that?
We have a lot of guests today. We're really excited about our guests, so unfortunately we're gonna push forward. But I just wanted to add, so Karina, again, thank you, your thoughtful comments. I think when we started this project, we knew it wasn't gonna be completely smooth. But as you recall, one of the reasons Dr. Brown led us to heterogenous math. There's data saying that for the past decades, the accelerated kids were only coming from two of our elementary schools. So if you want to talk about privilege, you've got to remember where we are. There's a history of servants in communities, which we're trying to interrupt, give more of these babies a pathway to algebra. But you're right. We can't throw any babies out, right, with that former. Pat and I did see what we thought was really good instruction with a lot of supports. Let's just say we expect this to all balance out in the end. And I have empathy for your baby who's sitting there saying, I'm bored. But we've seen it. We've been assured that sometimes those kids could be pulled out and be accelerated in real time. Just like kids who are struggling a little bit can be pulled out and remediated in real time without either party knowing, you know, which kid is in which boat. So continue to participate, continue to give us updates. I can tell you, we're not gonna abandon this project in such a short period. You really want to see the results. Diane, you've heard everything we've said. Pat, you'll summarize it beautifully. And to our guest, whose name I don't know.
Amy Jackson?
Hi, Amy. Hi, Amy and Christine. Our goal is to engage as many of our kiddos as possible with this life of permanent information. We have an agenda to start this year to find out certain things. Believe it or not, SEL is on that list, right? Social Emotional Learning. And in particular, want to explore what ruler has to offer regarding relationship. Just up there. Soon as we get there, you'll be the third to know. You'll be the third to know. All right, with that, we are going to approve the minutes from last meeting. Have a chance to look those over?
I did. It was like a stroll down memory.
That was you.
Let, let the minutes reflect that I really enjoyed reading last month's minutes.
All right, and it's approved. And we're gonna get to the meat of our meeting now. Looks like we have a presentation from our friends at BJM, A Plus Program.
Is it open over here?
So Amy Jackson, I'm the current president of the Avidant Plus After School Program Board of Directors. I'm also a parent of a child in the program and at BJM, and I'm a parent of a child in sixth grade. And I'm Christine Turner-Cap. I am the current third and fourth grade reading teacher at BJM, as well as a board member of A Plus. I've been the teacher liaison board member for the past five years. And Amy joined us two years. Stacy Nemhard wanted to be with us tonight, but had a prior engagement. But she is the peerless and incredible director of our program. And so she sends her well wishes.
I'm going to the next slide. Not sure if he's driving.
Sure does. Thank you so much. So just a really brief overview and history of our program. A Plus has been in operation for just over twenty years as a critical part of the school day for many of our students at BJM. We offer after-school daycare and enrichment programming. We operate from two to five, five days a week. And the real crux of our program is providing access to high quality, not just after-school care, but high quality enrichment child school care for as many as possible of our families. Our total current enrollment is ninety-one students, which is just about over thirty of our student body at BJM. We have students from kindergarten through fifth grade. Fifty-six percent of our enrolled students are children of color and sixty-five percent of our students receive a discount or scholarship for tuition. We offer between ten and twelve scholarships per year, as well as a sliding E scale for middle and lower income families. Having affordable childcare in Ithaca is a huge challenge. And so this fills a big need for many of our families whose workday extends more beyond our school day. We are, I believe, the lowest comparison after-school, lowest cost after-school program in the district. Many of the other programs don't have a sliding scale, don't offer scholarships, and also are an extra piece for participation in different enrichment clubs. So for example, you'll see on the next slide, our many offerings, we don't offer an extra charge for any of them. All of the enrichment clubs are available for all of our students at no additional costs. Some examples of the clubs we offer, and these are all offered within one given year. We have cooking programs with Cornell Cooperative Extensions, sewing with people from So Green who come down to volunteer. We have physical college students who come down and do STEM programs, who do after-school tutoring and homework help. We've had sign language programs, dance, Legos, yoga, art programs like Cornell, chess, knitting, theater. And we also have students who participate in the Golden Opportunity Tutoring Club and then participate in the enrichment after. It's an incredibly robust program. And for many of our students, it just feels like an extension of their school day, doesn't feel separate. The majority of our staff are also staff members at BJM during the school day. So the relationships they have with the students that deepened during the after-school enrichment program carry over into the school day. And these become really critical point for many of our students, who just encourage and motivate them throughout their day as well. So the relationship building is a big part too. The students really look forward to their time there and form great friendships and memories and bonds as well with each other. And it's nice for kids to get to mix across grade level as well, so there'll be clubs with third graders and fifth graders working together collaboratively. We are here tonight with our request, which I'm gonna let Amy. We've been very fortunate. Anything you see with financials that is concerning, you can blame me. Before Amy was in charge, I was interim president. I will say financials is not my background. I am an elementary school teacher. And so our struggle and push pull always is how can we offer assistive care for as many of our families as possible in and as affordable ways possible? But also in the past years, we recognized we were not paying our staff the competitive wage that they deserved to be paid. And so it's a push pull. Affordability, but also honoring our staff who work so incredibly dedicated for our students. So Amy comes with a very strong financial background and is helping us build a more robust plan, but we're kind of in this in-between year where there is a need and that's why we're here. And I.
Thank you. So before we get into the ask, I'll just give a quick overview of the financial situation. So the program is relatively small, but obviously very impactful, two hundred and seventeen thousand dollars for the current budget year. We have a budget deficit of twenty-five thousand, which doesn't seem like a lot in this particular context, but it definitely is. We're fortunate that we started the year with a cash balance because we received some stimulus funds through through the pandemic. The big key issue here that I discovered when joining the board is that the historical tuition structure was not sufficient to actually sustain the program. And when I say that, I mean even full-paid families, of which only thirty-five percent of the students that are enrolled are paying full tuition. Even full-paid families are not covering full expense for their participation in the program. There's a deficit of about five hundred dollars per student per year for full-paid families. And a much larger deficit for families that are in the middle to low income bracket and obviously the scholarship. So as a result of that, obviously we have to take some action. So we've implemented a three-year tuition increase program that started this school year. It was the first tuition increase in multiple years. We want to make this as gentle on the families as possible, but also recognizing that if we don't do something immediately, the program is in jeopardy. So we have a three-year tuition increase plan. It may take us longer than that to get to a point where the full-paid families are actually covering their costs, but we have to start somewhere. We can go to the next slide, please. So the district has historically given this program sixty-five thousand dollars per year, which I want to say, thank you so much, because it definitely would not be possible to offer this kind of bridge program in an after-school setting to this many low-income families without that support. So thank you so much for that support. It's been many, many years since that number has changed. And as we all know, prices have, inflation is on our system. So what we're requesting tonight is an increase for our next school year of thirteen thousand dollars to that contract for a total of eighty thousand dollars. And an additional eight thousand dollars per year for the next two years beyond that through twenty twenty-six for a total of twenty-nine thousand dollars over three years in additional funding beyond the current base. And I'll reiterate, the board is very committed to over time decreasing our reliance on funding from the district because it's obviously not sustainable to operate that way. We are currently seeking other grant coming opportunities to the community. We've historically received funds from the Pearl Foundation, from Triad and multiple sources. So we're gonna explore every opportunity in that regard. But I think it goes without saying, this is an essential resource for our community, particularly for working families and low-income families, many of whom would not have access to after-school childcare without this program. So with that, I will take any questions. Thank you.
My questions, just can you go back to that? All right, so sixty-seven plus thirteen, I see where the eighty comes from. I don't understand the eight in addition for the following two years. Where does that go?
That's to give us a little bit more time to bridge the gap in terms of the deficit. So rather than just, I mean, I'm not sure what the protocol is for this particular organization. So if you work in annual increments, then this ask for today is thirteen K in addition to the sixty-seven for next year. If needed, you can reassess, you know, mid-year, next year and see where we stand in terms of financials and implementing the tuition increase program.
But the eight brings the sixty-seven up to seventy-five for the following two years.
Right, so my, I modeled this out and my thought process around that is because we have a planned tuition increase for the next three years, I think that we can make the budget break even with that amount of additional funding.
All right. Question, where I turn it over is what is the current? Well, if I were to do a pie chart, see what your total budget is and how it's made up, you gave us a great number, ICSC is a sixty-seven K. What are the other larger components of that pie of a hundred percent?
The largest is the, is the family tuition, which is just over a hundred thousand dollars. And then there's.
That's how much per kid?
Full-paid families pay about two thousand five hundred bucks per year for this amount. And there's a, there's a scale, so I don't have those numbers with me today, unfortunately. But part of the problem with the tuition structure is that the gap between full-paid, middle income and low income is not appropriately allocated. So I'm not sure, I don't have a history on when that tuition structure was created. But it's not, it doesn't make a lot of math out of sense. The problem is we can't just flip a switch and say, let's make this a fifty percent, you know, lower cost versus seventy-five percent. We have to do that gradually because these are real people that we're impacting. And it's a struggle for them to pay what they're paying already. So it's not a matter of, you know, making a business and saying, let's right-size this right now because there are, you know, families that are gonna be impacted by this.
All right, so we got the one sixty-seven. Is there a third component?
There's multiple other grants that we have. So it's, it's a combination of grants from various sources, tuition and some limited fundraise.
A house question. Are the parents who are participating eligible for subsidies themselves? And if so, is there any pants that you explored, whether or not they can pass that on to you?
My understanding is that we have a licensed program in order to do that. And I don't believe that the program is currently eligible for that license. But it's, it's something that we've discussed as a board. But as of right now, I think the answer is no. Is that your understanding? It's my understanding, yeah.
That's all I have for now.
So my questions are historical in nature.
Sure.
Befits my own background. When I first came on the board just under twelve years ago, my first board liaison assignment was to BJM. And so I went over and, you know, attended PTA sessions. And one of my fondest memories was visiting the A Plus program, which I was a South Hill parent and knew South Hill After School Program. And incredibly dedicated staff, great enrichment, wonderful program. At the time, Dr. Brown jogged my memory, was that being underwritten entirely by the district? I recall it being like three or fifty dollars a month or something wildly inexpensive.
No, it was never underwritten completely. It was always, but it was much more than. You had to decrease it just before my tenure. Yeah.
That's so good to know.
But it had to subsidize, so pretty significant.
Well, it was subsidized pretty significantly because of the population at BJM. But I mean, if you had to pay for an after-school program anywhere else at any of the other schools, it's astronomically more.
Yep.
And that's because A Plus is just a different entity than than all the other programs, which are run by outside, are outside entities. And basically, I think their break is, I mean, they don't pay us rent or anything. They just get to use the facility so that, you know, that saves them a lot. And may well be cheaper than other programs. I don't know. But it is, I, so I don't know how, I don't think I was liaison to BJM. I did not even know they had set up a fee structure and there was more tuition being, being gathered. And of course, there is a vast economic range within your family. So, you know, to completely subsidize it isn't, you know, it's not the right thing to do economically because there are very low-income parents in lots of other schools who don't even have access to that. I'm thinking Enfield, I'm thinking Carolina, I'm thinking South Hill.
We do have eleven students in the program that are from other schools in the district.
Oh, yeah. I'll continue to jog you. This particular topic and conversation will generate much discussion from all over. We asked the question, if my memory is serving correctly, twelve years ago. And we had two board meetings, all in this room. The folk with opinions on all that. And it was a minimal decrease, I think, at the time. No, there was no, no decrease or increase even proposed. It was just a conversation about what we charge for our school programs. And which ones we subsidize, which we don't. And the remark was made that we subsidized one and others. So I'm just, historian speaking again, I would just say to the board and everyone else, if we wish to engage in competition, let's do so. I'm not wearing the scarf from the last time we mentioned it. I was here for some of those stupid late night meetings. Poor Dr. Brown opinion. Arguing about you know, pit programs against each other. I hated it then.
Well, this.
I'd like to repeat it now.
Well, this, yeah, this is not a question of pitting after-school programs against each other because this, this is the only one still that we give money to.
Just giving some more historical perspective.
Oh, yeah. That was before my time on the board. I only joined when Dr. Brown came on.
Yeah, the question.
Question too.
I could be wrong, but I think, do other elementary schools receive funding for extended day programs taught by teachers? And we go with BJM, right? My understanding was that money was just being differently allocated at BJM. But that I do not have the same sort of view I've from Portland, only four or five years in. But.
So I can give a ten-year, in my, in my ten years. Because there's more. um, because there's more, Amanda Verba, who could join us and really give an outline of the, of the amount in the subsidies and how, so it's in, um, so let's be super precise with our language right now. Yes. Um, and it's for my own practice, because I confuse people when I do. So, um, Christina just mentioned, Christine just mentioned uh, extended day. So extended day are funds that are allocated by the state to pay certified teachers to work on academic intervention programming that all students in the school have access to. So let's say, um, so typically, the range with the seven other elementary schools is twelve thousand to sixteen thousand.
I think I had nine thousand dollars in my extended-day budget as the Northeast.
Yeah.
Per year.
Yeah. And per year, and so at Caroline, I think it was roughly twelve thousand five hundred. Turns out, not a lot of kids wanna extend their day, and nor do teachers. So, because my kids are most tired, vulnerable to then try to do like, like intervention programming, so the teachers at Caroline, who are wildly creative, thought of, you know, Rocket Club, so they had integrated approaches to teaching anything from integrated ACL and healthy relationships to, to math and the physics of rockets launching. So that's the distinguished thing opponent, and my understanding is that A-plus at one point had certified teachers working side, so that was the, it
There was like an overlap there.
Yeah, the extended, except
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, because extended day has a specific academic component, and after-school is, is childcare after-school that everyone tries to put enrichment in, like
So you just used another word, so now there's a third word. Enrichment, so we have daycare, extended day, and then something called enrichment. So PTAs have enrichment programs, so let's say Caroline enrichment had, um, I'm trying to think of a good example. Fun sign, I'm, but, but like, I'm sorry, I'm stuck on the, I'm stuck on the task, I'm, I'm
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so, so enrichment might be from, um, like the Science Center might come and sponsor a program and families. So there's a sliding scale, but you pay twenty-five dollars to participate in the Science Center programming. That is typically parent-run, volunteer-run. And the reason, I wanna be precise with that, extended day versus enrichment versus daycare is our legal right to free access to public education for extended day is pretty, um, as it should be, all kids should have access to it. So if I have a one-to-one aid and you're offering Rocket Club, I get to go to Rocket Club. And it's our, our onus, the school leader and to make sure that
The, the one-to-one aid goes with the student.
That does not, that is not the case for daycares or enrichment that are PTA-like.
I read, I went
So that's
Now, they'll be getting an enrichment program for two years.
Okay.
And we did a variety of after-school, but, and we also took the kids by skating.
Yeah, that's a great example, so now that's not to say we don't wanna support our PTAs, we want to support our PTAs in designing programming that mimics our inclusion during the school day and at the extended day. And also
Yeah, that, that was, that was PTA funds and not, and a nominal fee, and also, it's not steady, the thing about A-plus, because it functions, you know, that had, that's there every day.
Yeah.
Because the, the parents need it every day.
I have, I have a, I guess, philosophical or strategic question. Um, this, I assume that the district has a strategic plan. Is that
We have a strategic approach, yes.
Strategic program, okay. So the question I would ask is, um, in that strategic approach, which I'm, I'm working on that from the other um, does the idea of supporting low-income families and, um, vulnerable children in this kind of setting align with that strategic approach in terms of the mission of the work that you do?
Absolutely. Again, one of, we're talking about the late-night, well, the, the most serious conversations. Right, and part of that was about it.
Right.
About the PTA who not that, not that money's not tied everywhere, but their PTA had significant funds from which they could um, uh, draw to do this enrichment and other who could not, which is why A-plus it's a lot started funding A-plus to begin with, right, so we, we get that, um, and we've always gotten. But uh, there's a couple more questions from me, and then we have to move on, because we have other guests here to speak about other equally important stuff, um. To be clear, after Mary's point was now, A-plus is considered an enrichment program?
It's, it's an, I want C-three school program that provides enrichment as part of the program.
Okay, but you also said there are teachers staying.
A number of our staff are, but I don't think it's the same as what we're calling your enrichment budget line. A number of our A+ staff are also staff grades for the BJM, but I don't think under the umbrella of how you define it.
Yeah, they don't send time sheets to honor that they pay or their contract negotiated.
Like our teachers or PAs?
Um, uh, the next, yeah.
Well, and also, just to clarify, um, the curriculum committee does not have funds to disperse.
I understand.
The board doesn't have funds to disperse. The district has a budget from which all funds must be dispersed, and there's a, uh, uh, finance committee that works on lots of financial issues. We, we actually have never taken up financial issues and to say what should and should not be funded, um, and that's something I think as a, as a committee, I mean, we're the curriculum committee, but we can't make that decision.
I understand, I was assuming that if this conversation went at least neutral, the next step would be the finance committee, that was my assumption.
Yeah, we have joint meetings, where the time is right, and our budget season is just about to start.
Well, could I suggest something else? Let's have a conversation between here, alright, about, let's have another conversation before another board committee. About approaches to addressing the needs of our young people, particularly our most vulnerable ones, in the spirit of effort. You know, I've learned a lot of my book, and there are many ways to approach this particular issue without going through conversations like this, alright? So if you can reach out to me, let's connect, my team and I will come out, talk with you, share things, and the thinking, we'll figure out how to make it work.
And this will bring more
Yeah, we've got, I learned there are one thing, these guys really like kids. Even or not.
It's actually the most child-friendly executive team that I have seen in my thirty years living in Ithaca by far.
Pretty cool. So thank you.
Thank you for visiting.
Thanks for for giving me another pleasant memory of a to the after-school enrichment program.
Well, I just wanted to show off this trip, because to observe her class, her integrator at ACL, maybe three years ago now, and it was one of the most beautiful classroom observations I have done, so thank you for that work. It was anything on She was a long-term director of the A-plus program when I was there.
Her name is Pucci.
She was huge, she
Yeah.
She was there when I worked.
I mean, she, she, she started the program, didn't she?
I mean, she, I think she's really hard to follow. Organizational
Well, she started, she ran it for a long
These things, amazing programming.
Also, moving on, I'm excited to hear from our communication experts about how should I say this? Alright, so there's been a lot happening in the news, a lot happening in media, all of the uh, conferences, segments I've been to last several years, there seems to be this unspoken conversation going on about the best way to help those, right, help them regulate, help them feel safe, help them feel comfortable in their own skin, help make sure those students want to uh, you know, act in ways that are not supportive of our community for anyone else. The confrontation, if I can use that word, seems to be between folks who want to uh, make all the glass bulletproof, and make all the door ballistic proof in buildings, and have metal detectors, and have some really draconian things in the uh, uh, in the ideal scene. That's not being, that's the jargon. We've seen some things recently that was making everyone rethink what this means, right, how the teachers and other kids see. What I have not seen in these conversations is an equal emphasis on the simplicity of, of the curricular and the social-emotional learning, the other tools districts are using to get to the same of child health, safety, and comfort. What we have thought about, and hopefully we're here some tonight, is about how could our communications office help us educate not just us, but this entire community about what an investment in that alternative pathway really means? We don't hear that. All we hear about is, do I get to safety last? And we've already spent wow, money, right, redoing the interest of every single school, so it's, the idea that this one doesn't care about physical safety of our kids is ridiculous. So I'm looking forward to hearing how you can help us be better at this.
Thank you for everybody who made it through, um, that was a good segue um, from them as well, because this is our approach and how we want uh, communicate what we're doing here at the district, um. So I'm here to talk about how we're telling our story through communication, um. So to start, I'm Caitlin Hart, Public Information Specialist, um, I started in August, and we can go to the next slide. Um, and we have a new communications team, um, so Margot and I uh, both started in uh, July and August, um, right when Casey went out on maternity leave, and she is back as of November, so we are a fully operating communication team. And we're very excited. Um, so to go into the next slide, um, sort of a communication overview of what we're tracking currently around Learning Forward. Uh, these are the three main places um, that we're getting our message out. Uh, our insider, social media, and on our website, um, our goal as a communication team is really to make sure that um, the community not only knows how our district is approaching this work, but that we actually are, um, there is a ton of complexity around the tenants, um, and so making that really tangible for the community and giving them examples of what's happening in the classroom and doing that as often as possible makes it easier for them to um, understand this work. And hopefully support it. Um, so if we look at the insider first, um, these are some of the overarching numbers, um, our average open rate since the insider, insider has started focusing specifically on Learning Forward um, is fifty-six uh, percent, which is up for forty-three percent when we weren't focusing on um, Learning Forward. Um, and it is currently going out to seventy-eight hundred people, just about. Um, we just released one on uh, Monday, the January insider went out, um, expect those numbers to go up a little bit more, but it currently is sitting at a fifty-six percent open rate, um, six-point-eight percent click-through rate, um. We highlighted um, the anti-racist curriculum tenant, um, and focused on elementary learning facts. And I had a story which was a feature in that. Um, and then moving forward, so they've been quarterly, um, we're gonna start doing these monthly, um. And so each month, we're gonna highlight a different tenant, uh, work with different um, schools and areas of focus, um, and really highlight each tenant specifically, um. And then we're also looking to start printing these as well. Um, so if we then look at social media, um, these are sort of our, from the last ninety days um, who are reaching on each platform, um, and this is a screenshot of our Instagram, and so we've started, um, they're called highlights, and so every time, you'll see the third one is the Learning Forward highlight, so every time we share a story, um, or post on Instagram or Facebook, we're adding it to the highlight reel, and we're able to track that way, um, who we're reaching um, about Learning Forward.
A couple of questions, sure, and continue, Kate, real quick, the eight thousand people roughly who are receiving this, what's that pool consists of? Families, family?
Families. And staff.
Family, staff, teachers, retirees, um, some board members. I subscribed the ICSD ELE email today.
I was just about to say, I think I've seen it.
Really cool, we'll just get it.
Alright, I'll, I'll save my other questions for when you get, do the end.
Alright, um, and so then the final main place that we're tracking is also the website, um. So we are doing web stories, uh, there is a specific page for Learning Forward, um, and the Insider also has its own page on the website, um, and we, from the Insider, we have linked the website twenty times, I think, so that we are constantly driving people um, from our newsletter to the website. Um, we are working on building out a new website, um, and so we are hoping to highlight um, this work even further. Currently, it's sort of buried in the matrix of how our website is currently set up, it's hard to find um, this information, so we're really considering that in the design of this new uh, website.
Those articles we could find now, the articles that's super cool.
Mm-hmm, so these are all um, articles we've done since um, I started in August and um, really trying to highlight the work that we're doing. So some of these have been in insiders, some of these have been just shared on space. That's the end of the
Well, that's it.
Precise.
Alex, questions back?
I think it's wonderful that we have a communications team that's going to be explaining curricular changes, and that we'll have, we'll have a, you know, and, and developments that will have a record of this, and uh, that people could then just learn on their own, which is wonderful, um. All good, all good.
Yeah, we, so the story that we worked up for this last one on the elementary learning, so it did take us a while, like it is very complex, so it took us a lot of thinking and reworking on how to distill that information so that it is attainable and understandable for community, our community to
Yes.
Yeah.
I, you're, you're in education, so of course I can't say it any better than you just did, but that's the whole point. None of this starts, I could walk up to somebody, wait this tomorrow, and say, hey, what about that heterogeneous Mac?
Yeah.
And it would be like, what the hell are you right, so, um, I guess the last question I have to group, and this is the terrible one now, is how do we get this information out to an even broader network than our insiders, is that possible, is that possible, is it a way to get it up the two hills, a way to get it to our, our law enforcement agencies, a way to get it to other folks in town who have an interest in you.
And legislators.
Yeah.
Alright.
Yeah, I just I was thinking about today, because for the first time in a while, I've seen a thoughtful email who were talking about the inside.
Who were excited about the insight and they each, I mean, people typically can direct to us unless they're angry about something. We wrote to speak to very specific articles and we looked at our stats today and I was, you know, I was pleasantly surprised at how many clips that certain links had received of this. So after all that, um, in my two hours since then of thinking, I think we need to just use all our networks to forward that email. But I just forwarded it to hundreds of people in my network and folks from all over the nation, right, were writing back to this school. Or I, I didn't know y'all were doing this. So maybe we just push our folks to expand this by forwarding emails, which are very easy things to forward. That's the first thought. Again, I'm no communication professional, but I do not afford an email.
Yeah, and the networks are we're the nine of us as board members.
Greenstone board, I just sent it to the board of trustee.
Yeah.
So we can send it to all the board.
Thank you.
Actually, speaking to that, like, what's your engagement like on social media? Like, is it positive? Does it feel like it's trolling? Is it like?
It is largely positive.
Okay.
The only real negative and extensive that I've seen is around the snow days. My children commit to me.
Erin, uh, just because you might have thought about the presentation, I would consider it important. There are a distinction about the number of accounts reached, uh, so that, that could get to some of the engagement, although you're asking deeper questions about what does that engagement look like?
I'm gonna think of the way, so when you wanna actually find engagement, there's, you can't actually get it on the site. You have to do a math thing, which I don't know right now, but there are formulas. Anyway, you know, like it, it can be complicated.
What we asked for, thank you for founding, and we'd learn more. I'll check to see if I got insight or if I don't think I can. That's just me.
I got it.
I'll check in, I will subscribe you if you're not.
Yeah, I didn't, I did not see it in my inbox, but I, I may be behind. Well, I got it on my personal email, not in my IC. I prefer it on my personal email. So I'll forward it and I know I have it there.
They were coming from communications that would.
Yeah, yeah.
ICSD Communications. Alright, Caitlin, we're gonna let you go home and.
Thank you for coming.
Take care of yourself. Thank you. Thanks. It's fantastic. Alright, so I guess with that.
There's something up here that says literacy overview, middle school focus. I don't think we have talked about that.
Maybe we have four minutes. It's Mary.
Thanks for this.
For show presenting, there, this is, there's a hyper document, um, this the all models of language and literacy. And so I'm just gonna give a brief overview. So the structure, so we have really great reading for high quality phonics instruction pre-K twelve. It's first instruction pre-K to second grade, the third through twelfth, there are a number of um, programs you can use based on the student's need. So I wanna share that when, uh, at the secondary level and at middle school, well, at all levels, but particularly at middle school. I want us to be learning more and interrogating this framework of the acquisition of language and literacy. This research, um, is the all in all is based on the science of reading and it talks about coding. So that decoding, which is word recognition and encoding that is spelling in relationship to comprehension of being able to speak and write. So essentially our, our brain has to get words off of a paper, make sense of them in the brain and then be able to express it. So that really great reading is a fantastic, um, intervention to support the coding component. But that alone is not going to be a complete approach to literacy. We also want to be thinking about the comprehension the ors and what are all of the avenues for giving children access to that, especially at the secondary level. So what you can take some time, you know, to, to look at, and then I'm happy to talk about it again next month, is what does quality first instruction look like for literacy at the secondary level? What are, I, I link some innovative course offerings that the high school is doing. Big shout out to the high school. They had a group of thirteen educators last year from a variety of departments um, approaching with needs to think about how to offer opportunities in reading specifically encoding that were credit bearing. And, uh, service learning base for students. So you can see what that looks like as a graphic novice. Of course, now at the high school, there is a service learning literacy leader program where they're learning the intervention and then volunteering at our elementary schools to help other students that are using that same content. So specifically at Point and, and Duett, you'll hear that here at Point, they're called enrichment courses that are yet it's part of both classes. It's a writer's workshop, plans, digital literacy, computer science course. All trying to target that comprehension piece. And this March, um, we'll be working with one consultant from really great reading on the different products and what's would be the most beneficial for our students based on current schedules and timing, whether it's a daily support or fifteen minutes as part of an enrichment course, or is it a ten week program? That's what the blitz is, that targets coding. And then how can we enhance that with a com- comprehension component?
And we wanna see this, uh, we wanna see this around at the middle school so we can we get a handle on it.
Yeah, yeah.
We need more education. I know why.
I can't go on until big March.
Oh, boy.
We hear you.
Erin, I'll be you.
And I would say, in addition to that, there is, uh, linked is some professional development, just what is being heard to support, because our next step in, in mid-March is really meeting with teams at Point and Duett. Alright, we've had really great, you're reading for a year. How's it going? You're piloting some different approaches for enrichment, home classes, what's working, what do you wanna change? And then also to acknowledge that project innovation is also supporting those school students. And so we've got a huge opportunity for middle school students to offer support to younger students in our summer programming. And that was a highlight of my summer, going to Project Innovation and watching middle school students teach circus. Um, to, to younger students, it's really beautiful. So you don't wanna waste that opportunity um, that's inherent in that.
I'll speak, speak for myself, maybe pack, you know, chime in when she thinks it's appropriate. You almost were, we're actually, I think, one of your savers. I don't yet know how to describe what happens when a child looks at a graphic and all they see are clouds. They see the cloud boxes when they don't see anything, they cannot make out anything. But if you ask that same child, give me a description of everything on that page. They'll come up with two hundred and fifty words, whereas their highly functional literate classmates come up with a list of forty-five. Seen this over and over and over and I, I don't know what that means. I don't know what it means when the child has the word. Bumbles it, either says it's reverse, I think I know exactly, or will jumble up the letter. So we're really gonna understand literacy. I think it's time for you guys to actually explain it to us. What does it mean? What are the components? Where do we reject this learning? Where do we accelerate? Where do we remediate? I just, I want to know.
Right. That's a great example that we could use. And there is a podcast on that soul of the story that I would recommend. That gives the background of scientific reading, but it's most popular in two thousand and twenty-two.
Maybe we'll share everyone a word in hopes that they too read it.
It's a great thing to listen to.
We're going to, we're gonna bring this meeting to an end. Thank you, Caitlin, for hanging out with us.